I want to call to order the meeting of the King George County School Board. In just a moment, we're going to stand for the pledge, which will be led by the King George High School STEM Club. And then afterwards, if you'd remain standing for a moment of silence, or you may kneel if you wish. Thank you. Excuse me, I believe there's going to be a presentation by the STEM Club, so we'll wait until the presentation rather than to hear you now. So just give us a minute or two. And now is time for any possible public comments. And again, if there's a public comment, you would state your name and your relationship with the school division. And then also, it would be limited to three minutes. Mr. Vance, do, oh, we have one, all right? Do we have any online? No, we're online. All right, we have one public comment. Mr. Stout, if you would like to come forward.
Good evening, Board. My name's Anthony Stats, 9007 Claire Street. I'm a former student. First off, I want to say big congratulations to all the students who've just graduated. If you're going from eighth to ninth, senior to now even college or something bigger, even one of our student reps who's graduated. And a special thank you to bus drivers, teachers, all the employees of the school system. A special thank you from everyone. It's been such a great year, and there are many more to come. My comments tonight are in particular about next year and how we can shape the upcoming students of eighth graders who are now ninth graders and so forward. One of the big programs that I'm going to lead and try to lead is community service hours to graduate. Surrounding counties do it. It's a great program to get kids off the streets and into productive community events, such as Love Thy Neighbor and such events like that. I hope the school board will look into adding community service hours to graduate. It is such, such a productive program because if you look at surrounding counties, you can see the year that they implemented those type of programs. One thing is you can actually see the uptick in graduates because people are getting out in their community. And one thing that's always stuck to me is someone who doesn't care about the county, you know, they're okay littering, they're okay doing crime, they're okay doing that. But once they can put their blood work and sweat into some of these programs, and they can actually help shape our county, if that's having their voices heard, if that's helping us recycle, if any of those things, they can start taking pride in their county and really start taking notice of, okay, we're doing this, we're doing that. I'm so, so grateful for everything the school board's done this school year, and I can't wait for many more to come. Thank you.
Thank you very much. All right, since there's no more public comments, let's move on. Are there any changes to the agenda? I have a recommendation for a change, and that would be that we have a discussion, and we'll talk about why, about possibly changing next month's, the date for next month's board meeting that relates to budget and the meeting of the Board of Supervisors. But we'll talk about that during the discussion, okay?
Sounds good, Mr. Chair. I also like to add, it's on.
Okay, go ahead.
Talk about the budget. So obviously, it's last May 11th. Actually, the Board of Supervisors proposed a budget, and I think we need to talk about our budget in light of their proposal. They start that conversation.
All right, is that all right with everybody? Okay, it's added for an item of discussion. All right, let's move on now to presentations. The King George High School STEM Club.
Good evening. I'm Elizabeth Bardinet. I'm a co-advisor of the King George High School STEM Club along with my colleague, Mr. Jim DeGrandis. And there have been many iterations of the STEM Club over the years. We had a little bit of an interruption during COVID, but these guys brought it back better than it's ever been. So proud of you guys. They've inspired me so much, so hopefully tonight they will inspire you.
I'm Anthony Caro. I'm a rising junior.
I'm Samuel Kitchen, also a rising junior. Liam Collins, also a rising junior.
My name is Ashley Klevakowski. I'm a graduating senior.
My name is Kamia Wilson, and I'm a rising senior.
My name's Laam Rani. I'm also a rising senior.
Hi, my name's Ayla Zook. I'm a rising junior.
Hi, my name is Ethan Damon, and I'm a rising senior. And I'm here to introduce the King George High School STEM Club. This year, we competed in not one, but two competitions. This year, we competed in the ICAD Dahlgren Robotics Competition at the Naval Surface Warfare Center. And we reached third place and won $1,500 for our STEM Club. We competed against 20-something schools, and we placed third overall after Freigsburg Academy and Rappahannock High School. And we plan on competing again this year and hopefully doing even better. We also competed in Sea Perch, an underwater robotics competition. And our team made it all the way to internationals and placed 18th internationally. So we have done. So we have done a lot this year, and we hope to continue this next year. And I will now pass on to my classmates and let them explain further.
Yeah, so we'll start with the pie top right over here. With the pie top over here, this right over here is a robot powered with a Raspberry Pi. So we were given a kit, and we built a robot using our kit. It has several sensors, has a camera, and we used this during the robotics competition. Right over here is our ROV we used for Sea Perch. This is an underwater robotics competition. So it's created using PVC pipe, and we worked on it to go all the way to the international competition, previously like May 13th. So we just competed at internationals.
And then additionally to the Sea Perch and Innovation Challenge, we have been trying to really get out into the community and speak at, we've speak at King, King George, King George Middle School and Potomac Elementary School to really get them interested and excited about STEM, STEM programs, and get rising high schoolers interested in STEM Club.
Yeah, so these are some pictures of us during the competition, designing our code, that sort of thing.
It was a two-day competition at the Mary Washington Campus on Dahlgren. The first day of the competition was preparation, so we had a day. That was the first time we had ever seen the course we would be competing on. So we saw our first objectives, we saw what we would need to navigate, and we had that first day to prepare and modify any code we needed. And then our second day, we had a bit of preparation that morning, and we competed that evening.
Yeah, it was really cool. We got to meet with a lot of cool people, mentors there, some representatives. So overall, it was a great experience, and we definitely learned a lot coding along the way. And there's some more pictures from Sea Perch.
Despite all of this, we managed to do a lot of good things this year. However, we faced a lot of challenges, which is why we are here today presenting to you. First thing is that a lot of these things that we did, we had, we had to do it all on our own. We did not have mentors that really knew much about robotics or coding or anything like that that could really help us. So a lot of the things we did was just from our pure willpower and like trying to figure things out on our own, which was a good learning experience. But having more available mentors, possibly people from the base or anything like that, would be very helpful for our club. And on top of that, we did not have adequate laptops that would be able to support like code that we could use when we're in like off-seasons to maybe branch out to compete in other robotics competitions. That's another thing that we're looking into trying to get for the club. But yeah, that's.
And then we've also been trying to continue to expand our knowledge and our different events that we're trying to compete in. Just today, we launched rockets together. We built them, which is a really fun experience. And we want to continue to try new things and try to engage more members of our school by doing that.
So during the Innovation Challenge at Dahlgren, I did most of the code design and work for the A-Team for King George. And I could just stand here and talk about that all day, about all the troubles that we overcame and stuff like that. I remember the first year that we did it, there was a lot, it was a lot more friendly. A lot of teams from other schools were asking for help and advice, but this year, it was a lot more cutthroat, and it felt like there was a lot more on the line. So yeah.
Yeah, to be honest, our team probably had, one of the biggest challenges was our pie top didn't have a library at all, so it had none of the code into it, like it had no other library, which is what tells it the certain moves. So we had to download that for about like eight hours. So that was a big problem. And we had to basically restart from block one, which really got rid of a lot of our functions that we had before. But we, you know, fixed it. And I think, what's, what's the guy who always comes over? Elliot, yeah. He was a real, real big help from Dahlgren. So we did have like one mentor, he was really good. Oh, and we have a phrase we say here in King George STEM Club. It's dream it, think it, do it. Can you guys say it with me? Dream it, think it, do it. Dream it, think it, do it. One more time.
Dream it, think it, do it.
Thank you. It inspires us.
Very good.
Awesome, thank you.
Hold on, you might, we might have some questions. Any board members have any questions? I have one, but, oh, go ahead, no, go ahead.
I don't have a question. I just wanted to say, I think what you guys do are super awesome. I wanted to suggest, I don't know if you're familiar with the America Rocketry Competition? If anyone's participated in that past, I haven't been in years, but it's a, it's a rocketry challenge for students like nationwide. In the past, it's been at the Meadows Event Center. So I hear, I hear the challenge without mentors and things. But so for those of you going on next year, like, I'm just Googling it to make sure it still exists. But it was, it's really, it's a really neat competition. You have tons of great ideas, but that might be something else fun you could look into in the future. But keep up the good work.
Yeah, Mr. Rolls?
I'm just curious where you went for the international competition that you mentioned?
So we were at the University of Maryland, right next to it.
Okay.
It was actually really cool. There's a lot of people, there's people from Puerto Rico, a team from Kuwait, a team from Egypt, a team from Australia. So it was a really great experience. We were definite, there was a NOAA, the organization, I don't know if you guys are familiar. They had a table there, and I was really great to speak to them. And they also had a like table set up so you could go and talk to all the teams, and they explained like all their robots. And it was a really great experience, and it would be really great to participate in again. It's just the Sea Perch kits we had to use this year were old ones from the middle school, so some new kits would definitely be beneficial to us.
Anybody else? I have a question. What would be, anybody can answer this. What would be your one big takeaway from your total experience of STEM Club?
I think the takeaway that I noticed is that a lot of us came into this not understanding much about coding or engineering or really any of this at all. And over the span of a few months, we were able to go from having never coded a single line in Python to creating a full remote control codebase, and we were able to compete and get third place in robotics. So even though none of us had any experience with this, we were able, by our own will, to learn exactly what we needed to do and did it pretty well, I'd like to say.
Wow.
For sure.
In a positive way, in a positive.
Excellent, excellent.
Awesome.
Anybody else?
Yes, thank you so much for mentioning, my own, thank you for mentioning the, that there is not a requirement for early experience in coding and robotics. Because we have a lot, and I was noticing at the middle school eighth grade promotion, we've got a lot of kids who are searching for places to be, and I don't know that they have the confidence to say, oh, I want to be in the STEM Club. I think that we need to advertise you a little bit more. You know, monetize your eyeballs or whatever NPR says. We need to get you out talking to kids who don't consider themselves coding experts. So think about ways to do that, especially those of you who are moving on to other fields and professions and activities now. Come back, you know, when, when you've got an opportunity at spring break and whatever, to talk to fifth graders and eighth graders and ninth graders.
Yeah, I was thinking the same thing is, did you have any opportunity to share any of your experiences with elementary or middle schoolers?
Oh, yeah, we did community outreach. We went to several elementary schools and did a presentation all about the STEM Club.
Good, good, good. All right. Excellent. Right, good. Well, congratulations. One more hand for them all. Appreciate it. Thank you, thank you so much. Okay, now we have a presentation for the United Nations Commission.
Good evening. I would like to start by thanking all of you for your support, thanking Dr. Brown for arranging my time off so that I could attend the UN for two weeks. It was a life-changing experience, to say the least. I have here some papers, just one for each of you that I'd like, is it okay if I come and give you a picture?
Oh, no. Quiz, quiz, quiz.
No calculators. I'd be better off with my fingers.
Okay. So first of all, what is the UN and why was I there? The UN is the world's largest peacekeeping organization. There are 88 member states that work together to make recommendations about various issues like climate control, global resource control, and human rights around the world. The UN currently has a list of 17 different sustainable development goals. I was there specifically for goal number five, which was the empowerment of women. I was fortunate to, to attend the UN CSW or the United Nations Commission for the Status of Women around the World, which supports goal number five. While I was there, I attended meetings about different issues faced by women. We also worked to edit a 42-page document called the Agreed Conclusions, which all 88 member states would take back to their countries and agree to implement. My goal was to promote three different things, three different ideas within the 44-page document. Those three things were that all women and girls should have access to medical care. All women and girls should have equal access to education and technology, especially women and girls in rural areas, much like King George. The third one was all women and girls should have violence-free places to live, to go to school and to work. Okay, now it's quiz time. You ready? I'm going to ask you a series of 10 questions. You just have to write down the number or the percent or the fraction, okay? Number one, in how many countries is being gay punishable by death? Number two, in the past 10 years, have women's rights increased or decreased around the world? Number three, what percent of women in Iran, think of the country of Iran, feel that their headscarf, called the hijab, should be optional? What percent of women in Iran who currently are living in Iran believe that that headscarf should be optional? Number four, how many people rounded to the nearest million are currently displaced by war or disaster? Number five, how many countries currently have the practice of FMG, also known as female genital mutilation? Number six, how many women and girls have been killed for protesting in Iran since the September revolt? Number seven, how many women ages 16 to 29 out of 10? So you're going to do like a number out of 10, one out of every 10, two out of every 10. How many women in the United States ages 16 through 29 have experienced online gender-based violence? Specifically, gender-based violence, not just bullying, but gender-based violence. Number eight, what percent of maternal mortality deaths occur during war, displacement, or natural disasters? Number nine, what percent of trafficked people, human trafficking, what percent of human trafficked people are women or girls? And number 10, around the world, what fraction of women have faced any type of violence, whether it's physical, mental, or online? You can make that into a little fraction, you know? And there's a bonus question. The bonus question is, how many girls in Afghanistan ages 12 or older are currently attending public schools? Okay, you ready to hear the answers? Okay, number one, how many countries have being gay punishable by death? 16 currently. Number two, in the past 10 years, have women's rights increased or decreased? They've actually decreased by 20%. Number three, what percent of women in Iran feel the headscarf should be optional? 70% of the women feel that they should have the option to not wear it. How many people rounded to the nearest million are currently displaced by war or disaster? 100 million people. How many countries currently have the practice of female genital mutilation? Eight, including Egypt, which I thought that was very odd. How many women and girls have been killed for protesting in Iran since the September revolt? Now, this figure is as of March, so there probably have been more. 569 women and girls have been killed for protesting. How many women in the United States ages 16 to 29 have had gender-based violence online? Eight out of 10 women and girls in that age range. Number eight, what percent of maternal mortality deaths occur during times of war, displacement, or natural disaster? That's 60%, 60% of all infant mortality, or, sorry, maternal mortality. Number nine, what percent of trafficked people are women and girls? 94% of trafficked people are women and girls. And what is the fraction of women around the world who have faced any type of violence? One out of every three women in the world have had some sort of violence. Extra credit bonus, how many girls in Afghanistan are currently attending public school ages 12 or older? Zero, because it's illegal. Now, here are some other facts and statistics to help me realize the importance of what I was in New York to do. Women make up 2/3 of the world's 796 million illiterate people. According to global statistics, 39% of rural girls attending secondaries are, are only 39% of rural girls around the world, mostly in the developing countries, attend secondary school. Now, of course, here, that's, that's not accurate. Boys, it's 45%. They say that every year in the Global South, every additional year of primary school increases a girl's wages by 10 to 20%. So it helps them support their family. Rural girls are twice as likely as urban girls to be out of school. In Pakistan, just being a half a kilometer farther away from a girl's home will decrease her chances of going to school by 20%. Rural, rural women's deficits in education have long-term implications for the family, for their ability to have good medical care, to feed themselves. And in Latin America, mothers with no education are, have a 3.1 times more likely, it's 3.1 times more likely that their babies will die because they don't know how to take care of themselves or the babies. While I was in New York, I heard from women from Iran, from Africa, from Afghanistan, from the Global South, from rural areas. I heard from women who were reporters and women in STEM fields. And what do you think they all had in common? Anybody want to guess? They'd all faced gender-based violence. Now, we talked a lot about the Global North versus the Global South. It's, the world is, of course, divided into the northern and southern hemispheres. And the Global North are the, the big, big countries, America, China, Russia, all of Europe. And the Global South is most of the developing countries. And I was really, really interested to hear how we basically, we in the North are basically going to the South, stealing their things, they're mining their minerals, mining the gold, all the things that we use for technology. We bring it back to the Global North, and we fashion the technology. And then we hike the price up to try to sell it back to them so that it's not affordable. And actually, it's not affordable for us really either. I mean, you guys know that because we're trying to put computers in the hands of all the kids, and that was a big hassle. Now, you're probably thinking, as I did, it was very overwhelming. We had meetings from eight in the morning till six at night. We took lots of notes, and we did a lot of reading at night when we weren't in meetings. But there was one moment that was the most impactful for me. I was, I was at the embassy for Abu Dhabi, and they Skyped in two girls from Afghanistan who talked about educating the young girls who weren't allowed to go to school in their basements. And every time they heard a knock at the door, they were afraid because they knew that they would be killed if they were found out, as would all of the girls who were in the basement. And the women spoke with, with such passion, and it was just amazing that they put, they literally put their lives on the lines. Because if they had been found out that they were Skyping with us, or if their whole mission were found out, that would be it for them. So now, I had a hard time because I was like, well, what can I do? I mean, I can't fix the world's problems. So if you turn your paper over, when I was in my meetings, every time I heard something that I could do, I wrote it down. And I compiled a little list that I share with all the groups that I present to. You guys are like the 10th presentation so far. So what are some things we can do here and now? Clean out your old phones and your old tablets, your old computers, and donate them to an organization that will responsibly put them in the hands of women and girls who need them. There are a lot of organizations that collect technology and then dump it on the Global South. And they have the problem of, I mean, things that won't work. So make sure you pick a responsible organization. Share accurate information about women's rights and abuse on your social media platforms. If we don't talk about it, if we don't share it, it can't get better. Push for global governance of the internet to help prevent the violence that goes on on the internet. Support women-owned businesses and products, keep an open mind and discuss issues. Prepare men and your sons to promote women's empowerment. Because if the men don't help, it's not going to happen. Encourage women to enter STEM fields. And mentor young girls or a group of young girls. Get women access to legal advice and medical care if they have faced violence. And support young girls in education through reputable organizations. So that's what I have for you. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them. I hope I didn't go over my time limit. So, how'd you do on your quiz? Yeah? Okay?
Yeah.
Yeah? Okay, good.
Because I had conversations with you.
Yes.
I learn from every conversation.
Yes, it was overwhelming. So no questions?
I'm sure. No questions?
I don't have any questions, but I just, thank you very much for coming and sharing this information. I mean, a lot of this, I'm like, not as well-versed in all of this, but a lot of, I mean, I didn't do super well on my quiz. I answered a lot of them like, you know, too many or those sorts of things. But it is amazing, the lack of awareness that exists. I grew up in rural Pennsylvania, but I mean, it's not like King George. It was not like a, like a down-and-out area by any stretch of the imagination. And about two years ago, like my good friend that I've grown up with all my life, she's my age, she has two little kids. She goes, they go to the school district that I went to, which was a very good, you know, fine school, good school. And we were talking, I mean, she grew up in the same world, essentially the same upbringing as me. And she did not know that female genital mutilation existed.
Yeah.
And, I mean, it's a major, like, it's, yeah, it's mind-blowing. So just thank you.
That presentation was very graphic and very, another very overwhelming presentation. Because they had girls there, women there, who actually had experienced the cultural practice. And they said it was, you know, they were told they were going to a party, and it was no party.
Not so much. And often performed by women, which is even more alarming.
Yeah.
Crazy.
Absolutely.
And I know, I'm a female engineer. I graduated in a class of, you know, hundreds of men at Penn State. I'm, I work in a male-dominated technical field. And I'm super excited that my daughter, who's six, at Potomac, you know, she decided the other day after going to Steam Night that she thought maybe she wanted to code robots when she grew up. So I personally hate coding, but I appreciate engineering and all of that. So it makes me very excited. So thank you for all they do and for coming.
Well, and thank you for this opportunity.
And also, thank you. I've traveled to most of the world and I've seen, in fact, what you were just talking about. I've been to six of those eight countries and worked in three of them. And dealt with that hundreds of times. And then also, I don't know if you realize this, but we have a very large Afghan refugee community in Fredericksburg. I don't know if you realize that.
I do know.
My wife and I work with it, and there are several others that do that. And there's a tremendous need for E S L teachers and several to help that community. But I'm sure you're aware of all those things.
Yeah, my daughter manages an apartment complex, and they have a lot of Afghan refugees there.
Maybe the one that my wife and I go to all the time.
There are several.
Yeah, there are, there are. But thank you very much, and I appreciate. And yeah, the more that you can, you know, spread this information around and make presentations, like you said, this was the eighth, which, how many have you done? Three, eight?
10.
The 10th one, wow. I think we'll encourage you, the more that you can do this and the more information that's out there, I think accurate information. Because so often, it's either exaggerated as too high or too low. But having accurate information is always valuable.
Very important.
And it changes all the time too, depending on what's going on in the world. But thank you, bless you, appreciate everything you're doing.
Thank you all.
All right. Let's move on, consent agenda. Let's, in case somebody has gone through any of these, if you have any questions, let's mention each one, and then we can go ahead and make a motion about all of them together. But let's first of all, on the minutes for March 27th, the regular meeting, is there any discussion, concern, or changes that we have with those minutes? All right, the next one would be the April 3rd. Any changes or mistakes that were made in that one? Okay, the April 6th, am I going too fast for those? All right, the April 6th, any changes or concerns as you read through those? All right, April 12th, the special meeting?
I have an issue with April 6th.
Okay, go ahead.
I'm sorry, the, I'm not the vice chairwoman. I'm noted as the vice chairwoman on that.
Oh. Oh, yeah, you are, okay. All right, thank you for that correction, Ms. Hoover. Appreciate it. Any other comments about the April 6th, the songs were there? Okay, April the 12th? All right, there's the regular meeting on April the 12th. There was a special meeting and then the regular one. All right, April 26th? Okay, that's all of them. Do I have a motion to approve these consent agenda minutes?
I move that we approve all the minutes in the consent agenda.
Second.
Any discussion, since we've already gone through these? All right, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Chair votes aye, unanimous, it's been accepted, thank you. All right, let's go on to action items, the lab school. Dr. Boyd?
Yes, Mr. Chair, this evening, we have Dr. Rebecca Towery, the Executive Director for the Academy of Technology and Innovation at the University of Mary Washington. And she's going to provide a presentation for us this evening. And then, at the conclusion of that, a request to authorize the nomination of a school board member to serve on the governing body of the Academy of Technology and Innovation at U M W. Dr. Towery?
Good evening, members of the board. I appreciate you allowing me to come here this evening. As Dr. Boyd mentioned, I am the recently appointed Executive Director of the Academy of Technology and Innovation at U M W, which is a proposed university partnership lab school that we are working to get up and running. So just as a little bit of background, I started in the education field about two decades ago and fell first into working at a regional alternative program with students who had had some discipline challenges and instructional challenges along the way. And one of the benefits of starting off there is it really impacted my lens on how to go about providing education to students and how to strive to really meet the needs of all learners as we're building programs. And so it's kind of a little bit of a full-circle moment for me to be able to come back and start to build out in partnership with localities a different type of alternative program that will meet the needs of students, but one that students can opt into and choose to be a part of that will hopefully provide a number of different opportunities. So we received a planning grant at the end of last fall to basically build out this proposed lab school. And in that planning grant, we proposed that this proposed lab school would have a focus on kind of that emerging reciprocal relationship between computer and data sciences as applied across different content areas. One of the things I heard, it's kind of fun getting to share out about this after hearing the presentation from the STEM club, because one of the things I heard some comments around is sometimes it can be scary for kids to look at going into these fields, right? So one of the things we're looking at in this design is really showing students how these are skillsets that apply across different content areas and apply across different interest areas, right? So you may have a kid who really, they have a first love of history or political science, but you start to provide opportunities for them to see how data science skills or coding skills might allow them to become more robust and depth and marketable as they go into these different fields. One thing I do want to highlight is we are building this out. Obviously, this is a university partnership school. So we are looking at this being a 9 through 12 school across Planning District 16, so city of Fredericksburg plus the four surrounding counties. And we've kind of had three pillars guiding that. So providing those innovative K-12 experiences, starting with high school and potentially eventually expanding. Having a close partnership with the College of Education to support the development of high-quality educators. You may or may not be familiar that U M W and Germina recently received a N O I S grant, which provides them the opportunity to provide significant scholarship money to help recruit future STEM teachers. And so there's some great synergy there where we may be able to really create some internal pipelines to develop and build STEM teachers who see education done differently. It's not just lecture, but it's very hands-on and interdisciplinary. And then they are able to get degrees and come back out into the local schools and teaching economy, which is great. And then the third pillar is really trying to find ways to use the lab school to benefit the broader community. We anticipate the lab school will be able to serve, when it has all four grades, approximately 400 students from across the region, which we know is a very small fraction of the overarching student body. So trying to find ways to leverage the lab school to provide professional development to different localities, to provide summer programs, a number of different things are being discussed in that. And as we kind of look at the next slide, you'll see some of what's come out and some of the focus groups we've had so far in terms of thinking through what those three areas should include. I don't think all of these will be things that'll happen in year one, but they're good components to be able to build out. And certainly, the 9 through 12 experience and the future educator experience are very intentionally being designed into the application. So getting into kind of some of the logistics, as I mentioned, we anticipate this program, starting off serving grades 9 through 12, and we anticipate approximately 100 students per grade level cohort across the five school divisions. In the planning grant, we noted that the number of division seats would initially be allocated by population percentage. This, of course, will, once, as noted by Dr. Boyd, we're asking for school divisions who are interested in participating to nominate a member of, for the board. And that final kind of breakdown will be voted on by the governing board. And then, per state law, around university partnership programs, it will be a lottery selection for participants if you have over, you know, 100 students per grade level apply from across the region. So that really allows to make sure that this program isn't catering to just one set of the region's population, but it's really being intentionally designed to meet kids' needs who are ready to pursue dual enrollment opportunities and who may be looking to get some industry certifications and maybe try a AP or dual enrollment class, but may not get a place where they want to pursue a full associate's degree before graduating from high school. So I can't share out with the school board without talking about funding, right? So we are looking at essentially a braided funding approach for this. So right now, we have a planning grant. And then I'm looking at basically turning in our application to get approved as a lab school in early July at the request from the state that it be turned in a full year ahead of time prior to opening. At that point, we will also apply for some startup and operating grants from the state. And then we'll also, long-term, look at additional grants at the federal, state, and kind of nonprofit level that might augment funding for the school. We all, will also be looking for each school division to provide local contributions based on the number of students attending similar to other regional programs in the area. What we are looking at there is being really intentional about making sure that that cost is below the average per pupil expenditure that each locality in the area is incurring already. So basically, the goal is to make this very economically feasible for school divisions to participate. And then finally, we, long-term especially, may look at some alternative revenue streams to augment funding. Those might include fundraisers, those might include the aforementioned summer programs that can provide opportunities for high school students, college of ed students, and also kind of reinvest in the school to make sure that we're able to keep those costs at a reasonable lead for the different school divisions participating. So, oh gosh, my notes popped up there, sorry about that. So in terms of what's next for school divisions right now, as noted, we've kind of been having some different stakeholder engagement across the K-12 and higher ed sector. This spring and summer, we've been working on kind of that governance organization, the academic operational and structure design, which is needed in order to submit the lab school application. As I mentioned, right, right on the heels of that, I'll be writing that startup and operating grant. And then by next fall, we will be diving right into recruiting that first class of freshmen to attend the school. And then in the winter and spring of '24, you'll be diving into staff recruitment and more in-depth curriculum writing to create these interdisciplinary project-based learning experiences in partnership with local industries and government organizations and nonprofits so that students have very authentic learning experiences through the program. And then fall '24, the school will open. So in terms of next steps for you all, obviously, taking some time to decide if this is something that the King George County School Board wants to participate in. And if so, then selecting a member for nomination to the governance board and then approving the chair to sign the resolution. And then, once the board convenes, the governing board for the laboratory school, providing that input so that we can design a school that's best going to meet the needs of the community at large. So I have, on this final slide, my contact information. Please don't hesitate to reach out if you have questions, want to have a longer conversation, want to provide input and feedback. I would love to have it. I'm also working on a kind of F A Q document. I have a pretty solid draft of it that I'm going to share out with superintendents, I think later tonight or tomorrow morning, to see if I'm missing any key questions that they think school boards might want to have. And I'll share that out as well, once that's finalized. Any questions I can answer?
I'm sure we have questions. I know, I have several, but yeah, go ahead. Who?
Brett, thank you so much. I was so excited when the news first broke and we started getting little pieces of information. And to see it coming to completion is so wonderful. But I want to commend you for looking back to your start at some point in alternative education. I'm such a believer in it, and I have been. Our programs in the region have been wonderful for that area. And look what it has grown, in you even. I mean, the skills that you developed are coming full circle. And thank you, thank you so much.
Others?
Question as far as, at current regional schools, or at least one of them is only part-day, so this is a full-day school, they would bus there and spend the whole day there?
This would, this would be a full-day program. One of the things I shared out with the superintendents, actually, we had a working session on Thursday, is I'm very cognizant of the fact that this is a large geographic area, right? So we are trying to come up with some creative strategies in the way we set up the school day so that you have a little bit of flexibility in the morning for students to get there at different times. We may start off the day, for example, with an independent study where we kind of have some menu of options. It might be, here's some coding languages. If you're kind of more focused on the computer science side or the data science, maybe you're going to pursue learning R, for example. And then you might also, that might be And then you might also, that might also be a time where students can pursue some industry certifications. We've, one of, in my previous role, prior to shifting over here, one of the last grants I worked on in that role was a GOVIA six grant for some COMTIA certifications, which is going to benefit the region at large. So King George High School will also receive the, hopefully, the benefit of some of that work, but that will be, some of those types of things will be some ways that we can, I think, maneuver around the needs of school divisions to maybe have kids arrive at slightly different times and still make sure that students are getting what they need during the school day.
Yes, thank you.
Okay.
I got more, does anybody else want to go?
That was my question, so, well done.
Yeah, thanks. So also, I'm curious, we don't have many charter schools in Virginia, but we do have a few. Can you comment how this is similar or different from charter schools, just type setup?
So this is, I guess, the similarity would be much like some of the other specialty programs, right? It's a choice for students to do this versus the comprehensive zoned high school. What is different is, unlike with the charter school where the students' enrollment shifts to that charter school, with this program, students would stay enrolled with King George Public Schools, and then their site of service delivery would be at the lab school. So that's probably the biggest difference.
I have some questions, but I want to.
I would suggest that, that you bring, that you and we bring the best of both worlds, because we certainly offer the additional opportunities for marching band and high school sports and a wonderful, other kind of educational support that makes students well-rounded, especially with your program now.
Which, which does bring up, this may be a question that's in somebody's list, I know I have it on the FAQ document, but right, how do extracurriculars and athletics work, right? So one of the thoughts behind that is, students will still be able to participate in VHSL-sponsored activities through their own schools. So King George High School, if they want to do athletics or VHSL activities, they can do that when they get back after school. If we do plan on developing some extracurricular and co-curricular activities within the lab school, that'll probably be of more of a club nature, right? That'll be driven by student interest, but I anticipate that we will have a robotics club, that we may have, you know, some, some sort of club related to data science applied to different fields. There's, there's some different opportunities to get creative, particularly with kind of the three different colleges at University Mary Washington, and maybe pulling those in in some different ways to provide some unique opportunities for students.
How would, the whole credit thing, is it, are they receiving college credit for a lot of these, or how does that work?
So I do think, based on some of the feedback we've had so far, there's definite interest in having a dual enrollment pathway. So I anticipate, so that's one of the things I'm working on building out right now as part of the schedule. I think I've got a pretty solid draft of ninth-grade year, and I've got some of the coursework in 10th, 11th, and 12th, but my, my heavy lift right now, right, is to figure out how to make sure the kids can get all of those credits needed to meet both high school graduation requirements, have opportunities to develop potentially some of those industry certifications they may want to get through this, and also have the opportunity for the associates.
Okay. I was looking on this page, it says, "Serving students in grades nine through 12, approximately 100 students per cohort across the five school divisions," and that's, would be related to the population percentage. So I want to be sure I understand this. So that means that this is, at the beginning at least, going to be just 100 students only, total. Is that correct?
The first year, it'll be 100 students, freshmen.
Right.
Then the year after that, we'll add another 100.
So it would be 200. Okay, I understand. So at the end, it'd be about 400 students?
Correct.
And you said, based on percentages of the school, so how many would that be from King George?
So if that's the way the governing board decides to go with this, I think, I've got my chart on my laptop, but I think it's about six per grade level.
I understand, I understand. So about 20, 25 students, okay. All right. And then, obviously, when it says lottery selection for participants, that's assuming then there's more than six or something, there's 20 or 30 that want to come, you would be some sort of lottery approach to that.
Correct.
And what's the qual, what types of qualifications would be involved? I have so many questions I should.
So that will ultimately be decided by the board as well, but the way the legislation is written around the college laboratory schools, and I know both from what we've heard from superintendents and from what we've heard from kind of UMW college of ed stakeholders, right, where they want their future teachers working with a wide range of students and not just students in the top 1% or students who are really struggling, right? So essentially, we're trying to find ways to minimize, for example, we really are trying to find a way that Algebra I doesn't become a gatekeeper. We know in a lot of our high school programs, if you haven't had Algebra I in eighth grade, it can really deter you. So that's another area where we've, I actually met with someone from the State Office of School Quality who also has a math background, to see if we can come up with some creative ways to do both small group and personalized instruction with math, so that if a kid doesn't have Algebra I in eighth grade, they could potentially do one and a half credits, maybe their freshman year and one and a half their sophomore year, so they could still kind of have opportunities for some of that higher-level math before graduating. Does that help?
Yeah, it helps, I understand. I was involved with an IB program, International Baccalaureate, and I was a coordinator for IB program overseas.
Okay.
And I just know that the, this is not, this is good and bad, that the qualifications to enter the program were extremely high, you know, because the language, you had to be, have at least two years of foreign language before you even started the program. Anyway, I just, but, and then at the same time, you find somebody with a full IB diploma, 95% of them got full academic scholarships. So, you know, that's a fantastic kind of program. I look at things like this, can be that kind of success for students possibly, and so I really support the idea. Okay, there's so many questions, but my question to you is, were you hoping that we would actually vote on this tonight, or is there a time limit involved, or talk about that a little bit?
So if you want to vote on tonight, I will not say no to you. If you want to hold off, I would ask, I am trying to submit the application towards the beginning of July, so if you could make a decision by then, that would be ideal, because that will allow us to get the board set up and organized so that we can look at submitting the application and kind of moving forward with those details that I don't want to decide without the governance structure having input.
How would you, in terms of the governance and having one more, assuming if we move forward with this, how often would you, kind of, how often would the board meet? What kind of requirements would that board participant have?
So in some of the other regional programs in the state that are set up like this, it's not a monthly meeting, so it's more of you typically a quarterly meeting with, there may, what I will say is, in that, that next year, in the planning year, there may be a need to meet a little more often, because there will be some decisions that need to be made. But the hope is that, once it's up and running, you're kind of able to check in on a quarterly basis, and if I stay really organized, then it'll work that way, and, and nobody has to take on too much of an additional burden over very busy lives.
Okay, last question, then I want to poll, kind of poll the board, see what their desire is. Are you going to stay with this as the director? Is that your intention?
That is my intention.
Okay.
So I'm, my previous role was overseeing evaluation and research and competitive grants, and this is, allows me to keep my feet in some of those, but also get back to working more directly with students, which is something I've really missed.
So if we didn't vote on this tonight, and we held it off to, say, the next meeting in June, that would still be acceptable?
Absolutely.
But probably not later than that, though, because you have to have the application by July, okay?
It'd be great if we could do it by the next one.
All right, obviously, I want to ask the board, what, what do you think about, do we need more time? Do we have enough information? I need to hear from you guys.
So I think we have a lot of information, I think, just given the magnitude and the implication of this for our community, I would certainly hope that everyone would vote in favor of it, but I think it would be, it would be prudent to take this and digest it, and in the event that there's community feedback, I think it'd be good to take some time to do that and vote at our next meeting, in my opinion.
Ms. Hock?
Well, I am so excited about it that I don't want to wait. I'm ready to do it now.
All right, that's why we're asking, Ms. Hoover?
I would, I would like to get some community feedback and, and read about it a little bit more.
So deal with it in the next meeting, okay? Mr. Rolls, you got a, there's two to one right now.
Yeah, I'm curious, somebody has, could think of any concerns, any reason not to do it, just be good for conversation, I think. But I do, I agree that waiting till the next time would be good, this. But also beginning, no offense, is there anybody, do we even have any volunteers right now for it? I mean, that's really what it comes down to.
So it sounds like you're leaning towards waiting, but you'd like to hear maybe?
A little more discussion, yeah, just where we're at right now.
Right, discussion.
Anybody thinking that they would want to volunteer for it? Do we do, anybody know that?
Well, I don't know if we get to the volunteer, he's talking about, would somebody be willing to volunteer for it? Well, let's, I don't know. I, I think we'd have somebody who would be willing to, but let's, that's the cart before the horse kind of thing. Let's, is anybody, those who want to wait, maybe that's what Mr. Rolls was asking, that'd be Ms. Hoover and Ms. Gonzalez, what are some reasons again?
I have absolutely no concerns. If we voted on it this evening, I would 100% vote in favor of it. I just, from a governance standpoint, think it would be prudent to wait.
Maybe get some input from the community, did I hear you say also?
Well, I mean, that would be the point in waiting, right, just, yes.
Ms. Hoover?
That's my intention as well, from just getting feedback, and I'm not, I'm not opposed at all either, just need some time to maybe digest and.
I completely understand that. I'm a processor myself, so.
Well, I'm just looking at this and reading a little bit about it. I can't see any real negatives to it. Obviously, there's always a concern about the funding, but we're only talking about 24 students, obviously, that's still money. And you got a grant to begin this whole program, which is also a very positive thing. And everything sounds positive, there's going to be a whole lot of details to work out, but the board would do a lot of that, and of course, you would too. I'm kind of leaning towards making a decision possibly tonight about going with it, but at the same time, I want to be respectful of those that are, have a little bit of concern that maybe we should wait. So I'm hearing just enough that, as long as it's not, tell you what, one more question, what would be the negatives and positives about waiting until next month, till the next board meeting? I know you would like to see it tonight, but is there a negative about waiting?
No, I'm not, your, your next meeting is only two weeks away, so I don't, I don't have any concerns from a timeline perspective, especially if you all can both vote and nominate in that same evening. I think that would quickly get me the information I need. The one thing I will just front-load, since you're asking that, that I will need to submit with the application is a biography of whoever is selected. That's part of what's required as part of the governance structure, is providing biographies of everybody that will be part of the governing board.
That would make sense.
So just, so I'm front-loading kind of what would be needed prior to that July, beginning of July submission. And then, yeah, I mean, kind of to the point of the people who have suggested, it would give you a couple weeks to get any community input that you want to get, gives you some time to digest the information, and reach out to me if you have further follow-up questions, and I can certainly provide Dr. Boyd with the FAQ document, hopefully, in the next few days, once that's finalized.
And this is your phone number and email on this last page here?
Yep.
Okay, you mentioned about a biography. Are you hoping that the people on the board would have some sort of background, obviously, in education, or, I mean, what's the reason for the biography?
I don't totally know, but it's an application. I, I think it's just to probably be, it's probably a check and balance to make sure that you aren't just flippantly creating a board with people on it and not thinking through what their background is that they would bring to the governance structure.
Okay, good. All right, I'm sensing that we should wait until the next meeting, so I would, unless there's a, we have a couple positives, and I'm sort of iffy, and so it's about, we have two that, let's wait, and since there's not a lot of negative things, probably, in my opinion, maybe even more positive to wait and read through this, and even opportunity to email you some questions that we may have. So, yes, go ahead.
I have a question about the, the need for the biography for the, for the representative. Would you need, so I heard that we would vote on participating and then nominating a representative at our next meeting, when would you need the biography of that member? From a time like, you need that with the application, like you would?
I do need to submit it with the lab school application at the beginning of July.
The beginning of July, okay, so that would, I was wondering if there was value in determining who might be an interested representative, so it could all be like.
That's a good point.
The June meeting, but it sounds like there'd also be time to like generate a biography in a couple days.
I think there'd be a couple weeks after your June meeting before I would really need it.
And obviously, we have a couple people that are coming off the board, and there'll be new people coming on, so last, I said last question a couple times, sorry. But the person who would want to be the representative beyond the board, I'm assuming you'd probably want somebody that's not in their final year, or that's, because they would be off the board by December.
It's, it's up to you all, really. I mean, if there's someone who's in their final year, but this is, they are all in on this, and they really want to dedicate the time and energy to help getting this started, but, you know.
But then we'd have to nominate some.
But then you would have to nominate.
Somebody else.
Whether you all want to have to nominate someone right away, I'm fine either way.
Okay, all right. Yeah, I would even be interested in possibly being on it, but others might be too. All right, let's wait, unless there's a disagreement, let's wait till the next meeting, and I would advise all of us to read through this a little bit and email questions to Ms., I'm sorry, what was your last name again?
Towery.
Ms. Towery, the email or phone, Ms. Towery, with any questions, and then we'll vote on the resolution and have a representative, hopefully, by the next meeting.
Wonderful, thank you very much for having me.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Renko, let's make sure that that's on, on the next meeting. Discussion, possible action item. All right. Oh, go ahead, did you want to say something?
Let's clear, Mr. Bush, would you, let's clarify when our next school board meeting is, just since we're talking about it.
Go to that discussion item now?
Yes, because that, I have some conflicts coming up, and I'd like to clarify.
Okay. All right, if that's okay with everybody, then we'll, we'll hold off on the variable error volume boxes, and let's go to the, just that, and then we'll go back to the other action item and discuss about the date change. The reason why I said I wanted to discuss this has to do with budget. The state, it looks like, may be coming down with their, we say may, we don't know for sure, on possibly the 6th of June, but we'll see what happens. And then also, the Board of Supervisors will potentially be voting on that on the 6th of June, which is a Tuesday. Our board meeting is the 5th, and I think they're voting on that on the day after our board meeting, it would behoove us to have an appropriate discussion to know how much we're going to receive, if possible, and I know this is a last-minute thing, that I did speak with Dr. Boyd about this, to maybe change our board meeting to the 7th, but obviously, it's summertime and it could be a problem. So that's the reason I want to discuss it, Ms. Hock, is ideally, I think it would behoove us to wait and see what the state says and the Board of Supervisors, and maybe after that, rather than the day before.
The 7th would, would be okay with me. I, I'm going out of the country for a couple of weeks after that, so I want to work around that.
Same with me, I'm leaving the morning of the 8th, so.
Nine.
I can do the 7th.
You could do the 7th, Ms. Hoover? Mr. Rolls? Outstanding, all right, Ms. Renko, oh, well, we need to vote on it, sorry. Can I have a, sorry, we can't just talk about, can I have a motion that we're going to change the meeting from the 5th of June to the 7th of June for the King George County School Board?
So moved, second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed by nay? Chair votes aye, motion passes, we will have the next board meeting on the 7th, which is a Wednesday of June at 6 o'clock. Thank you. All right, let's go back now to the other action item, variable air volume, VAV boxes, Dr. Boyd?
Yes, Mr. Chair. So if you guys remember, I think it was at the beginning of this school year, we, the board authorized me to begin the search for a contractor to construct these VAV boxes. So if you remember, they're variable air volume boxes at King George Elementary School, and at the time, we approved the request to not exceed 210,000. Well, we have now put these out to bid, and we have awarded the contract, and I come to you this evening with a copy of that contract and a recommendation to authorize myself to execute an agreement with Advanced Environment Solutions to design, build of the school VAV boxes, terminal unit boxes, subject to approval as to form by the county attorney. And you'll notice that the cost is substantially cheaper than that 210,000. So the procurement issued RFP, I won't read that number there, to. Uh, so the procurement issued RFP, I won't read that number there, uh, to solicit responses for the design.
Slow down just a little bit.
Yes, sir.
Where are you on?
I'm on the front page, uh, summary of information.
All right, okay, go ahead.
Yep. Uh, so again, under the summary of information, we have, uh, the responses for the design, build, school, variable air volume, terminal unit boxes. The proposals were opened on May 2nd. The most responsive and reasonable proposal belonged to the Advanced Environmental Solutions and the cost is 153,000, $694.36. So my recommendation this evening would be to authorize the superintendent to execute an agreement with Advanced Environment Solutions for the design build of the VAV terminal unit boxes, subject to approval as to form by the county attorney. And I can pause there for any questions.
Questions? And I'm assuming, obviously, the need is pretty big right now.
Yeah, this is a project that we've actually had in play for some time. This was a grant that we were awarded, that we had some matching funds for. Uh, we approved it at the beginning of the year and now we've, uh, awarded, we hope to award this contract to the Advanced Environmental Solutions Company, uh, for a cost that's, uh, I'd say substantially less than what we predicted on the front end.
Sounds good. All right, if there's no questions, can I, um, and I assume this has to be, um, voted on right now, there's a time?
Yes, Mr. Chair.
Straight. So any, if there's no further questions, can I have a motion?
A move that we authorize the superintendent to execute an agreement with Advanced Environment Solutions for the design build of school variable air volume, terminal unit boxes, subject to approval as to form by the county attorney.
Second.
Uh, any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
The opposed, chair votes aye, motion carries.
Thank you.
All right, moving on, um, discussion items, um, we have two remaining now. And that is the superintendent evaluation process and then also, um, as Mr. Rolls had requested update of the budget.
Just start with this?
Gonzalez, yes.
Certainly, all right. So in the packets, um, I did get submitted in time for the packets this week. So, um, I put together a draft of a replacement file for the evaluation superintendent. So what I would recommend being file CBG-F. And so I captured what I presented or offered at the last meeting in more of a policy type form or file form, I suppose. It includes the process as well as the superintendent evaluate, self-evaluation form, the, a copy of the stakeholder survey content and the, the formative assessment performance report, which is what we used, um, recently. And then, or sorry, that is, where's the summative one? Did I miss that? Formative. I thought there was another attachment, I'll have to look at that. Um, nevertheless, so I have copies here of an updated version of the first four pages. So the file portion itself, um, that captures the recommendations that Dr. Boyd provided for, um, evaluating the, as a part of the performance objectives, our, um, retention and, uh, sorry, employee investment and development objectives from the SUSHIGU plan. So if you flip to the second page of the handout, I updated number three, which was previously a section in the, in the, um, in the document that was categorized as annual employee retention rates that needed some input. And so I used the information provided, recommended by Dr. Boyd to generate, um, as I did with the other, um, um, objectives, uh, criteria for making a determination between exemplary proficient, developing and unacceptable. So the recommendation was to establish the criteria as, um, King George County Schools decreasing the number of unfilled vacancies by 20% from the preceding year and increasing the number of certified teachers by 10% over the preceding year. So I established that, um, or I proposed that that be the criteria for the proficient rating. And then I, um, increased and decreased accordingly for the other three, um, criteria areas. Does that make sense? Okay. So the rest of the content is pretty much verbatim from what was in the Power Point that I presented at the last meeting, uh, with the exception of a few minor updates that we kind of talked through during the meeting. So, that being said.
Sure.
Any questions?
Yes, Mr. Rolls.
Yeah, I, I do have a question, you're talking about the, uh, number three there. So the first part makes sense, decreased number of unfilled vacancies by 20% from the preceding year. But then, maybe just a wording thing then, for the next part where it says increase in number of certified teachers by 10% over the preceding year? Not totally clear on how to apply that. So because I, we don't know if we necessarily need 10% more teachers every year.
Certified teachers, so Dr. Boyd perhaps can?
No problem, yeah. So, uh, as you guys know right now, we're in the midst of a, a teacher shortage. And in many positions, we have, uh, folks that are long-term subs, uh, that are filling in positions and, in which they do not have a, a direct certification for. So our hope and this goal is to make sure that we continue to, uh, search and recruit for, uh, teachers that are qualified and have the specific licensure for that, that, uh, area that they're teaching in.
Right, so I, I understand, might need to be worded a little differently. So I think examples maybe clarify. So for instance, just for easy math, let's say we had a hundred teachers, ninety of whom were certified. Then what would meeting in the 10% criteria look like in that example?
So, you know, if we had ten or a hundred, let's use your example. So if we had, and we don't have a hundred, but if we had a hundred teachers that were, uh, long-term subs, then, then the desire would be to decrease that by, by the, a number of ten in the preceding year. But we certainly don't have that many. And again, it's a, it's a function of making sure that we have qualified teachers.
Yeah, and I'm trying to wonder how to measure that, because of course, we have many subs, which is wonderful to have that many and, but we don't necessarily use them all every day. So you're saying like, the, maybe the average number of classrooms that are being taught by a sub?
Well, we have different kinds of subs. We, we have substitutes that, that come in in the morning because they received a phone call and they need, because the teacher is, is absent for the day. We also have long-term substitutes that will, will sign on for a position for an extended period of time that, that is, in essence, the teacher of record for that class. So if we can't, for example, find a certified chemistry teacher, uh, then we would, would explore options in our community for anyone that has, uh, any background in chemistry, although may not be licensed, uh, in, in teaching chemistry. So we have, um, to your point, substitutes that come every day because they received a phone call. But then we also have substitutes that are termed long-term substitutes that serve pretty much as a classroom teacher every day and is just not certified in that area. So the desire and goal is not to, uh, reduce the number of day-to-day subs, but to reduce the number of teachers that are not certified. Uh, so in essence, in that example, to reduce the number of long-term subs with certified teachers in those positions.
Yeah, so it, it's not necessarily just reducing those, but it's replacing them with certified teachers, so.
Sure.
I just, to one turn, I'm wondering, wondering about the wording of that exactly. But so, I mean, yeah, thanks for the clarification. I think you might want to, I don't want wordsmith on the spot, but you, you understand my point? Because, because you could say, increase the number of certified teachers by 10% over the preceding year. So if my example over a hundred total teachers and you get ninety are certified, you could read that and say?
I understand it too, but.
I think, so I, so the language itself, I changed one word. It said, it was unfilled vacant, it was decreasing the number of unfilled vacancies by 20% from the preceding year and it was increasing the number of certified teachers by 10% from. I changed from to over because it was increasing versus decreasing. I thought that made more sense. I think that's kind of semantics, but I think, I mean, I think you're stuck on the, like, a decrease. But I mean, it, the increase in the number of certified teachers, I mean, it's conceivable that at some point you have over 90% of your, your teaching bullets filled by certified teachers, in which case you probably want to revisit this metric. But I imagine, I don't know the numbers, but I believe Dr. Boyd worked with staff to come up with these numbers that I imagine are reasonable metrics for things that we're striving for based on the number of certified teachers that we have. But as well as how many we would like to have, which I imagine is all of our, all of our teaching. So if we have, like, how many vacancies did we have this year? Do you know?
We could say today it was somewhere in the ballpark of thirty-six.
I mean, in, in general, like, or this, whenever, as a, as a point. Okay. Yep. So this year, we would, right, and that's the process. So this year, we would have met that. And so the objective will be for next year, for whatever that number is, to again, increase or decrease.
Right.
By that 10%, I think it's pretty clear.
Well, I mean, again, just to use the example I brought, so if we have a hundred total teachers, ninety are certified, then that means ten or not. Then a 10%, just reading this like literally, a, a 10% increase, that would, that would mean, okay, now we need 99 certified teachers by the next year. I don't, does that really mean, or we just mean, we don't, we want to reduce the deficit of 10 by 10%? So therefore, we would need to have 91 certified teachers next year to meet this requirement.
I think it's the deficit by 10%.
Yeah, so I think just want to reword that to, um, reducing the number, number of uncertified teachers.
It's the same if you increase the number.
Well, for example, if you increase 90 by 10%, it becomes 99.
Yeah, great, so you mean?
Increase the deficit of 10 by one, that means we get, need to get 91 to meet it. So it's quite different than the requirement to meet that, to meet it, depending how you word that. 91 is different than 99, that's my point.
Yeah, but if you decreased, if you had 90 and you decreased it by 10%, you'd have 81, not 91.
Decrease the number of certified teachers?
Yeah.
Well, we don't want to do that, we want to?
I know. That's why we went.
That's what I'm suggesting.
Hey, well, let me hear from maybe the rest of the board. I understand you, you have a concern. Um, I think it's clear like it stands. Uh, obviously, Ms. Gonzalez, you do, and Ms. Hawk, and Ms. Hoover, we haven't heard from you, what do you think?
I understand that, the meaning of it, yes.
Think it's okay like it is or should be okay? Well, thank you for your concern and I appreciate that. And of course, I did want to ask a question, um, this is wonderful, thank you for all your work, my goodness, this is tremendous, I appreciate it. Especially because if you didn't do it, I would have done it, so thank you. Um, but obviously, this is different, um, the, the CBG-F is different than what's in the policy. So are you, besides this year, you're also proposing that this will, at least for this year, be in our policy for CBG-F, correct?
Replace the file that is in, in existence, which I believe is just the, um, the like eight standard form that we've typically used.
That's right, I was looking, yeah, that's what's in there now is the eight standard form only, so that, this would replace that.
Yes, the only thing I want to add is I have to go back and look, I think, and I believe I intended for it to include both, all, all force, all the different factors, so the self-evaluation, the formative assessment, as well as the summative one, which I think isn't in here.
Right.
So that, that's just, we just add that to it. Um, so I, I mean, I imagine that this would be a further conversation and we can make the final adjustments and adopt it.
Okay.
At the next meeting or whatever.
Right now, you're just, this is the process we're going to use, understanding that we're going to have to adopt this as a policy. But right now, you're just presenting the process, okay, good.
No, I mean, that was, that's my thought, I'm open to suggestions.
It's fine, I'm just, again, we're trying to, you know, if we could just simply vote on this now and say, let's make this a policy. But, um, so if we put that in for the next meeting, um, that, this would also look at making this a policy and we're voting on it, okay? But this meeting, we're just talking about the process.
It just, it's a file, right, yeah, just.
Right, it's a file, that's the F.
Yep.
File, I understand.
Because I think our policies, I, I know we talked through that last time, if we wanted to, I didn't, I didn't address the contract or the policy because my, I thought they were both good as they were.
I looked at it again and I, I, you know, it could be a little clear, but you know what? I agree with you, let's just leave it, it's fine.
Okay, so then the only other, so I, um, we can make the little bit of updates to that and bring it, I would recommend bringing it back at the next meeting and adopting it. And then the only other point to discuss would be finalizing the rest of our timeline for actually doing the evaluation this year.
Yes.
Um, so I know the surveys went out, um, and the data, we, we got the data, um, I hadn't a chance to look through it yet, but thank you for making that happen. Um, so I think that was great that we executed that in a timely fashion, so kudos. Um, so do we, when, um, the SOL data, when do we normally get that or when would we expect to?
Preliminary, we have preliminary data right now. Usually the, and, and it only goes up from here, I've been reassured because, uh, a lot of the expedited retakes and some of the other metrics, like the growth metrics and such are not, uh, calculated yet. So, um, looking at the timeline, it's usually, uh, like your August timeframe, when the state comes out with the final accreditation data.
Okay.
August, September.
Okay, so we need to, um, have, we need to complete, or Dr. Boyd, we need to complete the self-evaluation. We need to review the self-evaluation and the data that was provided from the survey and then have us take the survey. So perhaps, I'm looking at our dates, so our date changes to the seventh of June. Perhaps if we got, oh, sorry, would you say, like, say, August for SOL data, maybe?
Uh, late August, early September.
Early September.
Probably, if we want to use that data, it'd probably have to be the September board meeting.
Okay. Um, how about with the, bringing this back to adopt it next week, I'll add the, like, final date.
Next board meeting, not next week.
So, sorry, next, yeah, 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 next board meeting. I'll, 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 we'll have this finalized and I'll come with a, like, specific list of dates by which we can get those done, does that work?
Absolutely, for me, yes.
Okay.
Questions from the board? Dr. Boyd, does that work for you?
That's great.
That's good, thank, yeah, you come with a timeline, thank you again.
Okay.
Maybe even have that, so it'll be on the board docs and we can look at it.
I will, I will.
Thank you again, kudos to you for all your hard work, appreciate it. Um, you stick, very well done up to this point, I'm sure it'll be in the final analysis, awesome. All right, let's move on, thank you.
Chair, I do have a question, I guess about, uh, what, uh, Dr. Boyd had sent out earlier, a spreadsheet, first goals.
Just about the evaluation?
Yeah, it's a, it's related to the evaluation. I'm not totally clear how, um, I guess it's part of the question. Well, that, I mean, that there is, so I'm looking at, uh, tab two, performance objectives two of the, um.
So we can put it up on the screen if you'd like.
That'd be great, yeah.
Yeah. So again, what you're looking at here is, uh, we have begun, uh, taking a look at the performance objectives of the evaluation. So you'll see the tabs at the bottom, performance objective one has to do with accreditation. Performance objective two has to do with student performance on SOLs. And again, that performance objective three is unfilled vacancies and, and the number of our certified teachers. So we have created, uh, spreadsheets to, uh, provide to the board so that you can effectively evaluate those three goals. Uh, what you see in there right now is very preliminary data, uh, some of it's not even accurate from the state yet. Uh, we know as far as graduation and dropout rates and such, uh, because obviously, many schools are even still in session. Uh, so, so what we've done is, is provided that information to the board and also provided it in a way that directly ties to the performance objectives.
So, okay, I understand, the, the part that I don't understand is there's a column for 2023 to 2024 that's already populated. So just trying to understand what the intent is there.
So that's the way that they, um, that's the way that the accountability measures are, are?
I'm talking about tab two, if we could go to that, so everyone?
Tab two. Are you looking?
Uh, so for English, math, the science, get the years, and for each of them, we already have the, the school year 2023 to 24 populated.
Yes, so that, that is the accountability year. So what it, what, and this is the same thing that the state does with the teacher of the year as well. Basically, the 2023-24 accountability or accreditation year is referencing the prior year's, this year's, uh, scores. That make sense?
Yeah, I wouldn't have guessed that, okay, thanks.
That answer?
Yeah.
Okay, good. All right, any other comments then before we go on? All right, um. Sorry, let me correct where we are. All right, um, okay, uh, evaluation process, um, Mr. Rolls, you wanted an update on the budget and I believe, uh, Dr. Boyd is ready to give that.
Sure. Uh, so, so yes, it's been my first kind of budget season, but it's been, uh, I don't have much of a relative, uh, feeling for, for how it stands up to others, but it's been busy, it's been very busy. Uh, we've had a number of, um, meetings, I, I know the Board of Supervisors has a, a number of meetings and I've taken appreciation for, for much of the process that they've gone through. Uh, as you guys remember, we went into the budget season with really kind of a story to tell and a set of priorities. Uh, our number one priority was to make sure that we addressed our strategic goal, number one, goal number one, investing in our employees and the development of our employees. So, uh, we prioritized the needs of our budget in that fashion, uh, which started off with making sure that we, uh, attempted to satisfy a compensa, a compensation increase, uh, followed by, uh, the need for, uh, the stuff in the budget, we called it, the budget builder. And also, uh, new positions, and then there were some other, uh, things that we worked through, through the process. So, uh, healthcare to be one and, and how we were going to manage the, uh, increased costs of healthcare. Uh, so to, to, to fast forward that, uh, the, the, um, Board of Supervisors, I'd, I'd describe as, um, through this budget season as being very collaborative with the school board, very, uh, open to, to working with us. with us. I can tell you that they certainly are experiencing constraints as well, trying to figure out how to manage a budget, not only for the school division, but one that considers the needs of our first responders and our sheriff's department and all the other departments that are requiring additional resources. So in working with them, they're very interested in making sure that we satisfy our goals or our priority of taking care of compensation of teachers. So they've worked, and many of you have been in a number of meetings, on trying to figure out how to afford the school division, the amount of money to cover the compensation increase. So at the most recent meeting, the conversation was, and again, if you remember, I should back up and say, our initial proposal to the Board of Supervisors and coming out of the school board was to provide a 7.17% increase for teachers and a 5% staff increase for everyone else. And again, our consideration in making that proposal was one, in trying to address the need, the shortage, the, the desire for certified teachers. But also with the understanding that, you know, we knew the county had constraints, and we wanted to make sure we focused those resources on where we knew we needed them the most. When we proposed that to the Board of Supervisors, or when they had conversations about our desire to do that, there were many members of the Board of Supervisors that were, were wholeheartedly in support of making sure that we provided a 7% increase to all staff. And, and in that vein, they were very interested in making sure they provided a level of funding to the school division that would support that request. So I think where we are in the process is they have their public hearing, which is part of the reason we wanted to reschedule our, our school board meeting. They have their public, public hearing on June the 6th. And from what I've gathered, that will require, at this point, I think, a three cent tax increase. And it's not just to satisfy the school budget, but it's to satisfy the budget of the entire county. And we'll certainly be in attendance at that, and we'll have some teachers there as well to, to say their piece as far as what that compensation increase would mean for them. And then it's my understanding, in speaking with some of the Boards of Supervisors members, that following that public hearing, it may be possible for them to vote on a budget that evening, possibly without state input. And, and, and just to flesh that out a little bit, we provided figures to the Board of Supervi, if you guys remember, there's, this is convoluted, but right now, the skinny budget in the state has been approved. The skinny budget in the state provided a 5% salary increase for SOQ positions. There's a lot of belief, and from what I'm hearing in my circles of superintendents, is that sometime, we hope by the third week of June, when primaries are over and a lot of the political jockeying is complete, that the state will revisit the budget, revise the skinny budget, and provide a 7% salary increase for SOQ positions. The Board of Supervisors is, regardless of what the state decides, very interested in providing a 7% salary increase regardless of what the state comes back with. So that, obviously, those two sums are different. If the state comes back with a 7% salary increase, potentially, the amount that the locality would have to provide is less. If the state only sticks with the 5% salary increase, the amount that the Board of Supervisors would have to come up with is more. From what I've gathered thus far, we've got a majority of school board, of Board of Supervisors members that are, that are interested in voting on a tax increase following the public hearing that would afford the Board of Supervisors to, to provide enough funding to the school division for a 7% salary increase for the entire, for the staff, for the entire staff. Also, and also meeting about half of these budget builder requests. And again, I haven't presented this yet, but enough funding so that we're taking care of much of the budget builder request. We're also taking care of the healthcare increase that we, we have talked about. And we're, I don't mind saying that in working with Mrs. Biazurski and her staff, we're beginning to take a look with, in our budget right now, our current operating budget and attrition and things of that nature, on how we can satisfy some of those position requests that, you know, may or may not be approved in this budget. So as I understand it, where we are is the Board of Supervisors is going to have this public hearing, possibly even that evening vote. We would then have to have a meeting and determine whether or not, well, and vote on, well, let me back up. They're going to have a public hearing, they're going to approve us for a certain amount of funding. It would be my responsibility at that point to take that amount of funding and adjust our budget as such, bring that budget back to this school board, and for you guys to vote on it for final approval. And I can stop there for any questions. And that's my understanding of my first budget cycle.
Questions?
You go ahead.
Yeah, go ahead.
So you mentioned the possibility of the state revising. Did you have a date for that?
From what I understand right now, and from what I've heard, there's not a firm date, and you won't find it anywhere. From what I've heard, it is likely to happen after the primaries are completed. You know, as you know, every legislator had to rerun this year. When their primaries are completed, it's my understanding that they're going to go back to the table and revise the budget potentially, and that sounds like the third, third or fourth week in June. I've heard other estimates. I've heard later, but I certainly haven't heard any earlier.
Is it possible they could, the legislature could vote on it earlier? I know it's unlikely.
I'd say it's extremely unlikely.
Okay.
Yeah.
Mr. Rolls?
Yeah.
So I'm sorry. I know you got more questions, but-
Yeah, I just had one question. Thanks, Mr. Chair. Dr. Boyd, just for the, as a refresher, can you remind me, so the, the dollar value, the local contribution that they, that the Board of Supervisors would be able to afford with the three cent tax increase, what that number is and what the number of the total local contribution was, the request that was proposed?
Yes, so if, again, there's a couple scenarios, but if the state were to stay at five, I'm going to give you the high number first. If the state were to stay at five, and they provided a 7% for everyone, and then the other things that are in the budget, like the healthcare and the, the budget builder and everything else, that number is $3,172,299.
Sorry, say it again, 3.1?
3.1 million dollar increase to our operating budget. So last year, we were at 21.1.
Right.
Would be 3.1 million over that.
And our proposed budget was, was-
Initial, six, right.
A $6 million local contribution.
Roughly.
So it's roughly-
Half.
Half.
Again, those are relatively loose numbers, but yes.
Thank you.
Mr. Rolls? Oh, I'm sorry, Ms. Hock? Any questions? Miss, I'll come back to you, Mr. Rolls. Ms. Hoover? Mr. Rolls?
So I think you said that there's, you wanted the 7% increase for everyone, and probably just nominally thought cutting out things that would also, that would eliminate all the new positions we asked for, but you're looking for other ways to possibly fund some of those?
Yes.
Right?
Yeah, we're actually actively looking at other ways to fund some of those.
Okay. Well, I would suggest that the Board of Supervisors can use whatever assumptions they want to establish our budget, but once they give us the top line number, it's our sole responsibility and prerogative to decide how to allocate those.
Correct.
So, so for sake of discussion, at the next meeting, I would very much appreciate if, in addition to everything that you're already doing, but that we go with the proposed budget that we already had, just have those numbers available, where we would have the 7.17% raise for teachers, 5% for everyone else, and just know if we did that, how much money would that free up to help us get some of those new positions that are, might be at risk? And I'm not saying that we would do that, but we need to have the numbers so we can have the discussion. So that's, does that sound agreeable?
Ms. Hock, go ahead.
Thank you. Some clarification, just, oh, it was on.
She over here.
I know. What, let's clarify that we're, we are asking for a 7% for SOQ positions. Is that correct? And 5% for all others?
So, so again, the initial request from, from the, from the school board and from myself was 7.17% for staff and 5% for everyone else.
For, for staff?
For, wait, 7.17% for teachers, 5% for everyone else. Now, again, what the state's going to provide is 5% for only SOQ positions. So what we are doing in essence is we're asking the locality to make up the difference from that 5%. The Board of Supervisors was very interested, pretty much collectively, in making sure that our request for a raise, and again, I, you know, appreciate Mr. Rolls' point as far as, you know, they, they fund us the money and we make the decisions, so you guys make the decisions. But for what it's worth, and, and, and working collaboratively, collaboratively with them, they were very interested in making sure that for stated, for, for, for issues of equity, making sure that we provided an equal raise across the board.
Thank you. I, I think we need to be very careful in, in understanding that SOQ positions are educators and other positions as well, for example, school counselors. But for example, school social workers are not SOQ positions, and they are desperately needed and many times have more certification in their field commensurately. So I, I think we need to be very careful at, at making sure that we are not, I'm sorry. That, that we are not degrading in that conversation, and that we're not degrading in our salary scale.
And, and I don't mind saying too, just to reiterate, we, we have worked, and will continue to work, to really dig through a lot of those new position requests and see if we can reapply some of our existing resources to satisfy many of those needs. I think we're doing a pretty successful job of it right now, and we'll continue to do so as we have some turnover in staff and we have other opportunities that present themselves through attrition and other ways.
I'll just clarify, am I asking us for a make a decision on the race? And I just want to have all the information to be able to think of the options next time, not limit ourselves to our, you know, from the get-go. So, yeah, we can have the whole discussion about the raises next time, but I think it's good to see the trade-offs, because we're probably going to have to give up some positions that we've been wanting for a long time. I mean, I'll quickly mention, you know, CTE. I think we've been on that for many years, and we haven't been able to get it. And so I think if there's anything we can do to get that, we need to think about it. And, yeah, so this is just one way to make sure we have options. Can we agree to just ask to have the information available at the next meeting?
I think, I think that's valid. And as Dr. Boyd also stated, it's going to be a lot of work, because obviously, of course, you'll be kind of ready, I guess, but the Board of Supervisors will make those decisions on the 6th, and then we'll meet on the 7th. But he will be ready to make a presentation to us with the money that we're going to be receiving, which, and we just leave it there. And then we'll load on that. And you're right. I would also agree that the, the new positions, such as CTE and other ones, are extremely important and very high priority. I wouldn't put them above the salary increase that we need, but I'd put it very high. I don't disagree, and I think that's a valid point, Mr. Rolls. I almost called you doctor.
Thanks.
Any other comments about that before we leave the, all right. Okay, let's move on to committee reports. Start with this side. Ms. Hoover?
I don't have any.
Mr. Rolls?
So I met on May 18th for Commonwealth Governor's School. And so all the changes I recommended were accepted after the foundational documents, founding documents, although we didn't, weren't able to approve the constitution amendments just yet, because that requires a unanimous vote, and Spativini was not in attendance. We also did, had the, our head governor's school IT specialist retire recently, and so we voted for a replacement, and that's being worked currently by the fiscal agent Spativini to extend that offer. That's all I have for Commonwealth Governor's School.
Ms. Gonzalez?
Yes, so I had, attended the Technology Advisory Committee meeting on May 16th. So a number of updates towards the end of the year. So there were some updates given on the ongoing efforts to integrate digital learning standards into our curriculum, and a variety of different professional development opportunities that have come, that have bubbled up as opportunities for staff members in that, in that realm. So a lot of just very interesting, interesting opportunities and good opportunities. One in particular was one from Radford University, a micro credential cybersecurity course. Just, that's one example, but a theme that I have picked up on throughout the course of the year in the Technology Advisory Committee that applies to, you know, the budgets and all the things, as everything just increases, right? We're looking at a $3 million budget cut this year, and our needs are not $3 million less. They're way more than that. And so I'm certainly an advocate for, for salary increases, so I don't intend any of that to imply that any of that should be taken away. But just to highlight, the STEM club here today commenting on their inefficient computers for coding, and, you know, our Chromebooks versus laptops, right? Like, a lot of those sorts of things. So just kind of talking through some of the priorities for the, you know, the budget and what, you know, what, what impacts there might be. And just general sentiments that, right, as, as the world progresses and technology progresses, our technology department is not necessarily just worried about refreshing our Chromebooks, but maintaining our cybersecurity and our safety, our IT, you know, safety at our, you know, entry points. And there's just, there's, there's a lot that I think, you know, unless you're like, are living it and hearing about it, right? There's, it's, it's a big workload that I think goes largely unthanked. So I want to commend all that are involved with Ms. Half and all of the ITLs across the, as well as all of the staff. There's a lot of work there that I know they are working their tails off, keeping us, keeping us running on a regular basis. There were some staff awareness training opportunities that were discussed. I did, we have them, the meetings are held at the, the new, oh my gosh, not the Maker Space, but the, in the middle school, what's the term, the, what was it?
Maker Space.
That's not the Maker Space, the collaborative, oh my gosh, in the new part of the building, the new, what's it called? What? PBL, Project Based Learning Space. Yes, there you go. Anyway, and all the, and all the, you know, you walk in, and they were in the midst of all the Chromebook collections. So there are, you know, stacks of Chromebooks from the middle school coming in. And I understand that the following day, I think, or the end of the week, they were trying, going to try to collect all the high school Chromebooks in a period of 90 minutes. So I can only imagine. So my hat's off. So some technology surveys were issued. They were putting them out to students and working on family surveys and staff surveys, you know, trying to field, you know, what the community wants to see with regards to technology, how students feel about the use of technology in the classroom, some comments that it's, you know, it's, it's interesting, what are, how are kids feel about technology use in the classroom? So lots of good information. But the survey had gone out to six through eight curators and was going out to high schoolers last week. So, anyway, that, and then the technology plan has been an ongoing conversation. So the need to develop a technology plan that'll be implemented to align with the strategic plan, and it sounds like a draft will be proposed at one of our August school board meetings. So, anyway, a lot of really good information, and I think that's about it for me.
Thank you, Ms. Gonzalez. Ms. Hock?
No committees.
I also do not have a committee report, so superintendent's report. Dr. Boyd?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chair. I'd just like to comment on a very successful end to the school year. There were a ton of reasons and opportunities to celebrate. I think I've been to preschool moving up ceremonies, and kindergarten promotions, and fifth grade promotions, and eighth grade promotions, and award ceremonies, and most certainly graduations. So congratulations, Jackson. This is Jackson's last meeting, so I'll certainly be the first to tell you, and I think many more will tell you, you've certainly made an impact on us and done an absolutely amazing job. So we appreciate you and we'll miss you dearly. I did want to comment quickly on the meeting last night. Last night we had the capital improvement plan meeting with the Board of Supervisors. So I'm happy to say that there's some very good, very good and positive conversations going on right now with the capital improvement plan. And I'll just provide a few highlights of those. There's, we presented officially the feasibility study for the preschool last night and there's a lot of desire from the Board of Supervisors to move that plan forward. Not only the preschool, but also the consideration of a fourth elementary school, which we all know will be needed very shortly. The possibility of moving the school board office and decommissioning that building was a topic of conversation. And then really, we talked a little bit about the desire to have an inner property bus loop that would serve all of the traffic for the school division between the fourth elementary school, the preschool, the current middle school, the high school and the school board office, which would all be within that campus. So a lot of good conversation about that, a lot of desire to move on that. Hopefully quickly, the next steps I think for the Board of Supervisors is they're asking us and the county to revisit Mosley Architecture and see if we can include the additions that I just described, the fourth elementary school and the bus loop in the feasibility study and also continuing those projects moving forward. They also want to hear from Davenport, who is the county debt manager, and talk about what it would mean to finance those projects moving forward. So that's happening right now at a relatively quick pace and it's good. There's also conversations among the Board of Supervisors in the CIP process to allow, and I would encourage all of us to possibly speak with our respective board members about this, but to allow the school division to keep their carryover funds and to satisfy many of our CIP requests with the carryover funds that we have from our current operating budget. So again, we have, you know, outside of the preschool, somewhere in the ballpark of like $400,000 worth of capital improvement plans in our five-year plan right now that could certainly be satisfied with end of the year money. And it would be my desire and I believe the boards to allow us to carry over that money and satisfy those projects as quickly as possible. So those are both conversations happening right now in the CIP process that I wanted to make you aware of. And that's all of my report. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Dr. Boyd. Before we go to board comments, would you mention briefly on our board docs, there was a check registry just and the revenue expenditure reports? I know it's just for information, but did you want to say anything about that?
It's just for your review. This is a typical report that I think you receive maybe quarterly somewhere in that ballpark and it's just for your review. It's nothing that has to be voted on. It's, I know our former board members are familiar with seeing it many times in the past and it's certainly, you know, all of the expenditures that you guys can take a look at at any time.
I just wanted to make everybody aware that that was there and I knew it was just for our information sake. And I think it is valuable and also as I was looking through it, it's kind of interesting to see all the expenditures and everything. All right, let's go with board comments and we will begin with our illustrious graduates.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And since this is my last report, and I'm technically not a student anymore, but anyway.
You love saying that, didn't you?
For the, the Performing Arts and Arts Department, they had a huge success for their art show. The course went to a competition with the select course earning excellent rating at the best, for best overall. Mixed course received a rating of good and then, I can't even pronounce his name, but one of the students received a best soloist overall at their competition and I would attempt to say the name, but I just don't want to butcher it at all, but congratulations to this person. SpongeBob musical was a huge success. Over 2,000 people attended the show and they had two sold-out shows. And then Ms. Wines, just and all the other department teachers just wanted to appreciate or express their appreciation for the board for supporting them throughout this year. And then the, you, oh my goodness, you would think that I'd be really good at this considering this is my last one. The King George Decca chapter elected all their new officials. I would again say all of them, but it's a comprehensive list that I have been provided with. I will say the two, they have co-presidents this year. One is Ava Krevling and Jenna Wines. So congratulations to them. And then the Skills USA, King George High School chapter, they're going to be representing the high school and the Commonwealth of Virginia at the Skills USA National Skills and Leadership Conference in Atlanta, Georgia at the end of June. And then the team consists of Kaden Murphy, Eric Suon and Jackson Schinaman. So best wishes to them. And then I would like to thank Mr. Watson for electing me and putting me on this position, in this position to sit on the board and listen to your conversations and speak of what's happening at the schools. And thank you for, thank you board members for just letting me be here and letting me express my opinions whenever they were needed or even updating you all. Congratulations to all the sports teams that won their district championships. There were quite a few of them. And then thank you to the teachers that have kept me updated throughout this whole year. Ms. Wines and Ms., I'm blanking.
Raznick.
Ms. Raznick.
Spring Club.
Spring Club. This is so bad. This is so.
You've already put high school behind you.
My brain is cooked right now, but I can't even, anyway, but thank you to all those teachers. And then congratulations to all the seniors that graduated. Such a resilient group of students. If you think about it, our first, our first and full year of normal school was our 11th grade year, which was last year. So we haven't really had that high school experience, but the class was competitive nevertheless with four soliditorians, which I think just speaks to how great of a class it was and then what a great night graduation was. The stadium was amazing minus the audio technical difficulties, but it was so awesome nonetheless. And then thank you again for just bearing with me and allowing me to speak. And Dr. Boyd, I think Dr. Boyd is probably the only superintendent that I've seen in the high school my four years. So I just, what a great superintendent you were this year and I hope there's more, more great years to come, even better. But thank you all, that is it for me.
Thank you. And we will miss you. Devin?
All right, so I just have a couple of comments today. So first, we had another spirit week last week and this one was okay. The turnout was less successful with the students and more so with the teachers this time, but the day that I saw the least turnout from, from what I've gathered, was the blue and gold day on Friday and that's probably due to the eighth grade promotion celebration and just being the end of the year. Now everyone's tired, ready to go home. So, yep, on that topic, the eighth grade celebration, which was on Friday, I think was just phenomenal. It was spectacularly organized, our music programs performed and there were several types of awards that were given and received during that, which include the perfect attendance awards, the student leader certificates and the principal's award, which I am honored to have been the recipient of for this year. So, thank you. But yes, our symphonic band played prelude music for the families coming in and coming out of the grad, not graduation, celebration, promotion, right? And our choirs sang their theme song right before all the awards were handed out. So yeah, I haven't really gotten any direct feedback from this, but I have heard quite a few comments just openly and it's all positives about it, just celebratory atmosphere. We made it. Yay. So, and my final comment is that our music programs have finished their last four performances. Our band's spring concert went very well. I think they played my piece. The jazz band played my piece exceptionally and just all the other bands as well, putting in all that hard work and it paying off is just amazing and all the great support that we have for our band program is spectacular. Our chorus program ended their concert with the annual music video that they had with all of the eighth graders in the choir having their pictures. Their pictures were taken prior to the performance and shown on a projector with the quote that they had. And so yeah, that was a great concert and our choir also went to King's Dominion on Saturday to perform at the Festival of Music. This was a competition. I'm not sure how many counties participated in this, but we once again had a superior rating in this competition. So just great job all around from our music programs and that's basically all. Thank you to, well, like Jackson said, thank you to everyone who helped me get here, everyone who's helped me since I've been on this board. Thank you to the board, Dr. Boyd, Ms. Rinko, just for everything. And who knows, maybe I'll be here in four years. Fingers crossed. All right, thank you so much.
Thank you. Ms. Gonzalez?
All right. Well, thank you both, Devin and Jackson, for all that you've done this year. I think we've all thoroughly enjoyed your reports. I know when I was your age, I'm not sure I knew what a school board was, so I commend you both on your, just your engagement and your involvement and it's been a pleasure getting to sit next to you the last few months. And Jackson, you'll be missed, but I am confident you'll go on to do great things and it was a pleasure to get to see you, have a front row seat to watching you get your diploma on Monday. So congratulations and good luck in your future endeavors. So you will be missed and hopefully we will see you again, Devin. So in addition to that, I was able to have participated in Field Day at Potomac last Friday, always fun to see a bunch of sweaty, wet, rowdy children outside playing games. Last year I got pied in the face a bunch of times and this year I only got a water balloon, so it was a big improvement. Anyway, but always fun, be a part of the, see what the kids do with their PBIS awards. I know this year they like got, like they could put in their hawk bucks in the hat for like hoverboards and all kinds of crazy things. So anyway, a lot of really cool stuff. And then that evening I took my kids to the Boys and Girls, the Boys and Girls High School Soccer Games Friday night for the district championships, which was awesome to see both of them win. So that's super exciting and wish them well, as well as the other teams, but happened to be at that one, so that was a lot of fun. Graduation on Monday, it's always a pleasure, kind of like, you know, after sitting through meetings, it's fun to just go sit and enjoy a beautiful day at the stadium and see everyone graduate. So excellent, excellent event. I think Ms. Wine's AV skills picked up through her drama experience, served her well. And anyway, I thought it was excellent as always. So congratulations to all that helped pull that off and to the graduates themselves. And then yesterday I had the pleasure of attending the ribbon cutting for the new digital sign at Potomac Elementary. I know that's a big deal, you know, I drive past it every day on the way to work and yesterday morning I was like, wow, sitting in traffic, look at all the fun colors and read the sign and see what the temperature is. Anyway, so that was really, really neat. I know that, I know the school and the PTAs were like excited about having been able to pull that off, so it was fun to be part of it. So other than that, you know, can, you know, just want to, I hope everyone has a safe summer. I know we'll be, we'll be here, but thank you to all the staff. I know you've all earned, you know, our educator staff, everyone across the board have certainly earned the right to a relaxing summer for those that are able to enjoy the summer. So I hope everyone had a good year and, you know, moving on. So that's all I have. Thank you.
Ms. Hock?
All right. So many kudos to give out and first of all, to our amazing seniors who graduated. And I know not, not everybody walked across that stage for various reasons, but, but so many successful stories walked across that stage and it woke some tears on my part because I knew them when they were babes in arms. I do want to say that our opening Star Spangled Banner sung by Aurora Madsen was one of the most outstanding efforts I have heard. She projected despite a sound system that was on and off. We are so fortunate to have this musical program beginning from early on culminating in our own students doing this incredible performance, including the musical selection by Leonard Bernstein, which was wonderful, just absolutely exciting and so well done. And these are students that we grow from our little biddies who are playing their drums at home, so let them play those drums. And by the way, I do know that our program is looking for another tuba at a large price tag. I've even started looking, you know, on, on the used instrument areas of all kinds across the country and they're really expensive, but we need to get our community together and fund that tuba. The eighth grade celebration was truly amazing. I certainly had a vested interest, but my bud was there with me, both, he and my grandson are both in the band and both walked across there and I was just bursting with grandma pride. And the preschool celebration, I could only get pictures, I was not able to attend, but the stories of our preschool celebration are where it all starts. And I know so, so many of those parents and some of the grandparents who were there that day and the remarkable progress that those children made in nine months is astounding. We cannot let this great beginning of our future lapse. We've got to continue to grow that. Moving on, oh, one more note about graduation. Having been, my maiden name was a W name, so I would like to make sure that our two last graduates get announced because people were filing out in droves and perhaps didn't hear the Z's of our graduates. So I want to make sure that David Isaac Zamudio Lopez and William Ray Zucker get their names pronounced clearly and congratulations to them as well as to all the others. So much to say. It is Asian American and Pacific Islander Heritage Month and we don't always know the heritage of our friends and neighbors, but let me tell you, we have some significant community members and students who are of AAPI heritage, who are remarkable additions to our community and we need to make sure that they are supported and encouraged and friended in our schools. And just to make sure that I keep everybody focused on reading for the summer, you know, I have some recommendations and I will, I will say these, but I will also give them to Ms. Rinko to put them in the minutes. The first one, for our children, The Patchwork Path. It's a quilt map to freedom and it is significant because the state of Maryland has a new historic site opening about the Underground Railroad and it includes quilts at that exhibit and it is developing and looking for input and it is an easy days ride from here. The other one is a local history, Disaster on the Potomac. It's the last run of the steamboat, what was it? And it was a wreck of the steamboat just off the King George coastline between Fairview Beach and Matize Point, sort of. And it is a fascinating read, it's detailed, it's got lots of pictures, so I highly recommend it. And we've talked about it a little bit in board meeting the other day and soon as I can save my pennies, I'll try to buy one for you. But it's the Equity and Social Justice Education, 50 Critical Questions. But it's the Equity and Social Justice Education, Fifty Critical Questions. And I think we all need to be keeping ourselves moving forward. And last note, but not least, kudos to Jackson on your graduation for your, and your future endeavors. You are going to come back and, and report to us. And Devin, what, what an asset you've been and an ally in many ways, both of you. Uh you, you've made significant contributions. So you know, honor yourselves with that and make sure you put it on your resumes.
Thank you, Ms. Huck. Ms. Hoover?
I just wanted to thank the um the CTE group that came and gave their presentation and they competed and congratulate them again for um their hard work and figuring everything out. I think that was a valiant effort on their part. Um and I also wanted to congratulate Devin for his leadership award at the middle school um promotion ceremony. Um and thank you for your, for your service here on the board. And also congratulate, congratulate, I'm forgetting your name too. Ja- Jackson, um I did attend the award ceremony and you got a, a, an award there, right? Congratulations on that. Um there was some pretty impressive, impressive awards there. Um and uh I'll just keep it short, sweet, short and sweet and congratulate everybody for a successful year.
Rollston? Also, uh say, Jackson, Devin, it's been a pleasure. Thank you for being here with us so faithfully, meeting after meeting. And Jackson, I think perhaps my favorite part of the graduation is when you walked and then someone, one of your classmates to the crowd yelled, that's my president. And Devin, congratulations on getting into Commonwealth Code of School. I haven't, have yet to make it to uh one of the presentations that do the commenting projects for each year. But I think next year might have to be the first time I go, see what you produce. I'm sure it'd be great. And uh Mr. Stats, appreciate you faithfully showing up to provide comment. Interesting um comments about the possibility of requiring community service credits. And you see, had some data on that and forgive the pun, but I would love to see those stats if you want to send them to me. And then always interesting, wonderful to hear from our community going out, making an impact well beyond, you know, in King George and beyond. So great to hear from the uh the UN Commission, I mean, quote unquote, great, because also we heard a lot of horrific things, but it's good to have awareness of that uh some of those things that are going on gives you appreciation for the freedoms and that we have here. We don't, we don't see all of those kinds of things we see internationally that she was uh discussing. Uh but then moving on. So graduation, of course, was, was a lovely night. I think it's been a great move that we've had to, I think it's for the uh and all the box thinking there to get the Fred Nat Stadium. That's been really a wonderful thing, I think. And I, I do have just a couple leftover budget things that I missed. I'll just mention here right now, since time is short to get this figured out, we want to get the best budget possible for the division. And we may or may not be able to finish that next time, but it would be good to hear or entertain the idea next time of looking at how many unfilled uh teacher positions we've had chronically. I know twenty-nine this year, and I don't know for that and whether there's any chance of us actually filling all those. And if not, I think it'd be really good to consider the possibility of maybe taking a few of those positions, the salaries that we know we're probably not going to fill, and we're just going to have that sitting there and consider the idea of using that some, some of that money to give like, it's not a signing bonus, like a bonus, like a moving bonus for teachers that might be coming from outside of the county to help them, you know, one barrier to, to coming to King George to teach might be the moving expenses. So if we could give us that and using some of those salaries that we don't expect to fill for those positions, might be an idea to uh entertain. That's all I have.
And thank you, Mr. Rolls. All right. I will try to be short. Mr. Stats, again, thank you. I know that community service um idea, I know, I don't know if you've looked at the, um I mentioned it earlier, the International Bachelor, the IB program is a requirement of one hundred and sixty hours uh before they can receive their IB diploma. And um uh that's, you might even look into some of those things as you're gathering more information about um community service requirements, because that, that was a good program. Um appreciate the STEM uh club and um all the things that they had accomplished in such a short time. And it sounds like a tremendous amount of learning that took place on their behalf, which was wonderful. I attended several promotions. Um it was preschool and then also the middle school and then also one of the elementary schools. And um it was exciting to see everybody as they're being uh promoted and gone and going on to their next level of education. And of course, the graduation ceremony was wonderful. Um and I think um uh I'm, the plans are, we're going to continue to have it at uh the stadium, which I think was a wonderful venue to have it. Um and um as we've mentioned before, and we might even consider some other kinds of things uh that we could use that venue for, because it's a great venue. Um Devin, your composition, I was at the middle school band, the spring band, and it was, uh wow, it was interesting the way that he presented you. We have a world premiere. Uh I thought that was interesting. World premiere. He, he's right, it is. Uh anyway, to be introduced in something that you've done at uh at your age and level and your maturity is really, it's a world premiere, and it was good. Uh Ms. Gonzalez, I want to say thank you again. I know I've said it several times for all your work that you've done with the evaluation process, and I know it's continuing. And thank you because it sure saved me a lot of work and I appreciate it. Um the Board of Supervisors, I do want to say that the meeting, I appreciate the Board of Supervisors um in the way that we're trying to be more collaborative in everything that we do. It is uh very valuable. I think the relationships that are being built and continuing to be stronger and stronger are very valuable in the future, not only for budget, but for a lot of other things. And I look forward even to uh even future uh meetings that we may have and collaborative efforts of things that we could do. Um we, um, oh, I was at the uh Potomac Elementary when they did the senior walkthrough. I've never seen that before. That was so, so fun. Um watching the uh, the teachers that um they had had when they were in elementary school. And uh um I saw your son and talked to him for a few minutes and just the excitement of those kids and that pictures of some of those graduates of when they were in elementary school and they were holding him and cheering him on. I don't know, it was, it was an interesting um event, and I'd never seen anything like that before. So it was really good. Uh eighth grade graduation, we already mentioned. Um and um I think that's enough. Um thank you. And now we will move on to, can I have a motion to go into closed session?
Pursuant to State Code Section two point two dash three seven one two A of the Code of Virginia, I move that the board convene in a closed meeting to review hires and resignations. And for review specifically, the superintendent's contract permitted under Section two point two dash three seven one one A, number one of the Code of Virginia.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
We are now in closed session. Motion to return to open session?
I move that the King George County School Board return to open session and certify that pursuant to State Code Section 2.2-3712D, only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements under this chapter and only such public business matters as were identified in the motion by which the closed meeting was convened, were heard, discussed, or considered in the meeting by the public body.
Second, certify.
Second, I mean certify.
And certify. All right, all the, those in favor say, yeah, okay, all those in favor say aye for going back to open session?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, we are now in open session. All right, do we have a motion to approve the personnel presented during the closed session?
We approve the personnel actions as presented.
I second.
Did you second it? Okay. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. All right, now do we have a motion to adjourn?
I move that we adjourn.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.